All right, um, thank you. I'm going to call to order the, um, for you. That's okay. He wanted to gavel.
I have an extra.
Uh, call to order the regular, uh, monthly meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I want to, uh, note that Mr. Henry is not here tonight. Um, and I want to just take a moment and extend, uh, on behalf of the Planning Commission, um, our deepest condolences to the Henry family on the loss of, uh, Mr. Henry's brother, who died tragically at age fifty-seven in, in Mount Jackson, uh, last weekend, I believe. So, our condolences to the whole Henry family. It's devastating. So, I'm with that. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, um, uh, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter, Mr. Kohler. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, the adoption of the minutes. As always, thank you to Ms. Lee for her work on the minutes. I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of.
Okay.
提议 or suggested.
Okay, can you just talk into the microphone?
Sure, sorry.
Thank you, no problem.
And I did write these, but on the, uh, on the Swindler applications. Sorry. Page two, um, on the, Mr. Henry stated he didn't see the need for the site plan. He stated twelve events a year should only include events of twenty to hundred and fifty people, noting that this limit, I think we should insert the word limit, does not apply to small events of less than twenty, just for clarity of what the decision was on that. And, um, similarly down on the Ryan application, um, the, um, the recommendation, I believe, by Mr. Henry was to forward to the supervisors with a recommendation of approval. So, uh, that, I think that with recommendation of approval should also be inserted there.
Okay. Any, anything else?
That's all.
And, uh, Ms. Lee, was clear to you? Okay, great. Um, so thank you for your attention to detail. With that, if, uh, someone would put forward a motion to adopt the, uh, minutes of our regular May eighteenth meeting with the edits that, uh, Mr. Light has presented.
I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Ritter and Mr. Light, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, this is, uh, this is a public hearing. Would you remind me, uh, Ms. Summers, did we, did we actually, we started the public hearing at our last meeting, correct? And we tabled it, okay. So, um, we're, we're going to kind of continue the public hearing, uh, that we began at our last meeting, and this is for special use permit number twenty-two dash zero-two dash zero-one, Sun and Young, tax map number twenty-seven dash fifty-six F. And this is an application for a tourist home, um, under one seventy-sixty-six, uh, K one seventy dash thirty-six E. And, um, what I would like to, uh, just explain to the applicants, that we appreciate you being here in person. Um, I know that's a bit of a burden to travel out here for an evening meeting. But what we'll do, since we're back here again talking about the application, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, um, to see if we have any further comments from the public. And then afterwards, if you would like to, um, state anything, I know that you came in with, um, some amendments to your initial application. And, um, I, I think it would be helpful for everyone to just understand what amendments you made to the original application. So, once we close the public hearing, yeah, if you come up to the microphone, and at that time, I'll just open it to questions from the members of the Planning Commission. Um, and then finally, um, ultimately, this is a, uh, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation for approval or denial of your application, and then it next goes to another, um, public body in Rappahannock County, the Board of Zoning Appeals, who determines whether or not to grant the permit. So, um, we're step one in a two-step process, okay? With that, I'll, I'll reopen the public hearing if any members of the public would like to speak on this application.
Hi, I'm Laura Mori. I met you all last month. I live, um, directly next door to the proposed tourist home. Given the proximity, the very close proximity to our home, we remain not in favor of this permit. Uh, we're concerned about the use of multiple buildings, um, of which there are several on the property. Their permitted use could bring a large number of people, which we are concerned about. We are, of course, concerned about the visual and auditory impact, given our home is just a stone's throw away. Um, a further concern is in regards to any animals that would be permitted on the property that could jeopardize the safety of our children, as well as, um, our own animals that we have. Again, we are, are in total opposition of the permits for use of a tourist home on this property. If this permit is granted, um, we kindly request the following additions out of respect, given how close this is to our home and our family, in order to protect us from, um, adverse effects of having a tourist home and strangers on possibly a, a weekly basis right next door to us. We're requesting the planting of fast-growing trees to promote a, a visual and auditory buffer, given how close it is to our home and our family. Strict compliance with the number of occupants for the home, based on the sewer, I wasn't sure if that was four or six. And for the occupants be permitted to reside, um, only in the main house, um, which I believe that is, is how the permit is requested, but there may be some changes. We're also asking that the tourist home includes only use of the main house in order to prevent a campground-like setting or atmosphere. So, not use of the, the yurts that are on the property, or the camper, or campers that are on the property. I don't know if this is possible, but some type of a noise ordinance, or a courtesy that noise levels be reasonable after eight P M, um, to not disrupt neighbors, um, again, given the close proximity, and then any type of an animal restriction, maybe including, um, requiring dogs to be kept on a leash, um, outside of, when they're outside of the home for safety of neighbors, as well as family. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else here to speak on this application, other than the applicant? Yep, go, yeah, and if you could just, we know who you are, but for the record, your name and.
I'm Lisa Jones. I'm in the Piedmont District, and I don't have anything, um, negative about the specific application. I'm just iterating again that, um, per one seventy dash fifty-two, item J, um, a, a proposed special exception, exception, uh, will not be detrimental to the implementation of the adopted comprehensive plan, including the goals contained therein. And I'd like to just point out, principle three of the, of our plan states that we are to protect natural resources, including soil, water, air, view shed, scenery, night skies, natural park access, et cetera. And I just want to say that I don't think there's any reason, when we have all of these tourist homes being requested, that we cannot require, based on that provision and the ordinance, that dark sky lighting be mandatory. So, that's my first thing. My second thing, which doesn't directly apply to this application, but I'm just gonna stay, wanna have it stated for the record, is that, um, family subdivisions are still subdivisions. And looking at the.
Could we, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we're gonna have a public comment period, and just to keep the administrative record clean. Yeah, so your first comment.
Okay.
Has at least.
Dark skies implemented.
Okay, and if, if you stick around, we're gonna have a public comment period shortly. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this application? Okay, I'll close, uh, the public hearing. So, uh, at this time, I would, Ms. Summers, do you want to just summarize, just in your words, kind of what, what has changed with the amended application, so that we all are working from the same understanding?
So, in my review of the amended application, they are proposing to use only the single-family dwelling. And, um, only guests will be permitted to stay overnight in that, and parking will be, you know, beside the home. They have deleted from the application any use of the yurt and sheds of the, for use of the guest.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
They've deleted from the use of.
Deleted.
Right, the, the, the use of the yurt and, um, sheds on the property.
And what do we know from the Department of Health on, um, on the capacity for the existing septic system? And how does that reconcile with, um, the number of guests that are contemplated as part of this, uh, application for a tourist home?
How septic tank is sized for three bedrooms? They did upgrade the septic, um, system, um, because of the, um, installation of the bathroom in the garage. So, they're still saying, the, the health department is still saying a maximum of six people in the main house.
Six people?
Yes. Which would be three bedrooms.
Okay. Okay, um, and if, is there anything you would, you would like to add? Or would you just like us to ask you, ask you questions? If, if there's anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to come up to the microphone. Yep, and just tell, tell us your name and.
Uh, my name is Tao Sun. My first name is Tao.
Okay.
Ni hao. Uh, agreed to, to see if we have somebody understand Chinese. Uh, I, I'm very honored to be here today, and first of all, thank you very much for your presence. It's already evening, uh, should be going home, but we are here. Thanks a lot. And also thanks to neighbor, uh, thank you for coming back at least, right, so spending your time. Let me give you a very quick summary of our property, our understanding of property, our potential use of the property. Uh, I grew up in northeast China, bordering Russia. My hometown is something very similar to this one, a lot of mountain, a lot of forest. So, that's why I come here, because I grew up in Beijing, I, I, and went to university in Beijing, and I work over there, all cities. Uh, even here, I'm now working in Washington DC, a lot of city, urban environment. So, when I came here last year, when I saw the place, I love it, so we bought it. We bought it for only one reason, we love it for the peaceful life, for peace. You know, in China, we have a kind of philosophy called inner peace. You know, when you face something, you face challenge, you should keep your inner peace. You know, Kung Fu Panda is called inner peace. So, for me, we love this kind of peaceful place. So, that's the key reason. So, why we are trying to stay here, we want to enjoy the peace, not only for myself, but also for neighbor, uh, and for the future potential renter, if it's approved. If not, we, we, we don't worry, but if it's approved, that's even better. So, that's a kind of big picture. Let me explain a bit of what we changed it, uh, following last application. Uh, our property management, Ashley was here last time. Uh, I think we changed the three major part. Uh, one is the, uh, app, uh, the possible number of people that should they, should stay in the property. We, we, uh, applied for eight previously, but never changed to six, so that's one. Uh, also, the second change is, uh, we, we, you know, our previous application, we didn't clarify, how do we use a, all the other additional accessories? The yurt, the, the shed, we didn't explain clearly, but now we are pretty clear. We are only used for the immediate house, so the single building and the, uh, uh, recreation building possible. That's our po, our current thinking. All the other use is not in the, in the application, so that's second. The third one, we changed the, the land use from agriculture to residential. I paid all the taxes for the past five years, accrued type interest, uh, to the, uh, to the county already. So, we will not raise any animal, as you mentioned, the second concern, no animal. We only want to see the beauty of the mountain and the trees, so no, no animal. So, that's, I think, the major three part. Anything else? Okay. And the one, just the one additional explanation, so we are applying for only main building for six, uh, people. But, uh, for this main building, we do not have re, so-called recreation room. You know, for in US, you have many people, they want to do some physical exercise, play pool, whatever, but for this main building is too small. So, we are trying to see, because we have a recreational building, after we got it, we want to pu, put it into something, uh, pools, football, uh, TV, uh, this kind of basic physical exercise stuff. So, we want to take it as, as R. It's not necessary for, uh, nobody will live in that building, but if people want to go there to take a, have some fun, they can go there. They can, we can call, call it as R. It's not for, for a basic service, but if you want to go, we can add, take it as R. So, that's what we are thinking now. So, before my coming, my wife, Zi Bin and I, we discussed. So, our basic principle is, uh, to understand what's your basic request, uh, what's your basic request. We make it clear, we accept all your requests, to make sure we get a peaceful life here, to make sure protect the environment, uh, in a place, to make sure have good, uh, harmonized relationship with neighbors. Actually, I went to the, the market, Roy, Roy's Market, a couple of times, I purchased a couple of goods over there. We, we, we share very good information, and also Chuck, Chuck, who is a gentleman, who raises cattle beside my property. Actually, I went to your house once, uh, put a letter in your envelope. I want to get a chance to talk to you, but I have no chance, because I'm living in Maryland. I have limited time to come here. But I talked to one of your son, your son, something like this. Uh, he's out here, he, he told me he has been here about twelve years, I don't know, something like that. So, I want to communicate with neighbors well, right? So, that's the background. So, what I'm here, I try to, uh, get a, a concern, address it, uh. So, we will be very, uh, grateful if you can give us this kind of consideration. Uh, to be frank, uh, we are trying to put it into a short-term rental market. It's not for make money, no. I, I don't care, because I'm, I'm working in the financial sector. I'm quite well protected by my, uh, Euro business. But one, what I'm trying to do, if it's granted, uh, for a potential short-term rental, we can ask more people to, to enjoy the peaceful life, and also cover part of the cost, I mean, take for, uh, taxes, some maintenance costs, I think that's, that's it, that's nothing for making money. So, any thought, anything else? Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
If you could, sorry, sorry to put you on the spot. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, we love our property here, and we don't allow other, mm, guests to make any damage to it. So, we'll put some rules for the short-term rental, like, uh, no parties, uh, noise control between like, eight to seven, or ten to seven, something like that. Yeah, we will, we will put some rules to it. So, uh, we, we, yeah, uh, just like my husband mentioned, we like the peace, and we want to share it to other people, and we want to keep it very peaceful. That's it.
All right, thank you. That was, uh, very thoughtful comments, thank you. If, if you'd just stay near the microphone, so I'm just gonna, well, you don't have, you can sit down. Yeah, sorry, but, um, I'm just gonna open it to my colleagues, uh, i- if they have any questions. You, you helped a lot with your, your statement, and I was understanding your intent, and it seems like your heart is in the right place, and you want to do right by your neighbors. So, I'll open it up, um, I'll, I'll just start, um, with Mr. Shuland on the end, and see if he has any questions. And then if you do respond, if, just so we can hear it, just use the microphone, yeah?
Thank you. Um, so you say you like the peacefulness in, of the area. How often have you used it personally so far, since you've owned it?
I purchased a house, uh, last October, it, October eleventh. But when I get everything done, I mean, the previous owner, they got some kind of, they laid, uh, uh, construction for a recreation building. So, everything done is in November. So, since November last Thanksgiving, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, Christmas, New Year, and the Supreme Bo, break, we come here about five or six times so far. I mean, you know, we can now, you know, holiday, so that's what we came.
Okay.
And that's how you plan on using it personally through the?
Yes, personally, yeah. So, if it's granted for short-term rental, uh, I don't think, as I mentioned just now, it's not for a pure, pure business profit-making, no. We will, we will come to enjoy it, so that's a kind of way. We are living in Maryland, Rockville, so it take about a half an hour, not that far, so you know, we can, we can. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
And so, just to, just to clarify, and Ms. Summers, maybe you know the answer, did I hear incorrectly that they pulled it out of land use?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, is that, I, I believe that's what you were explaining.
Yes, yes.
You went to the Commissioner of Revenue, pulled it out of land use taxation, the land use taxation program, and paid the, paid the back tax.
Mary, uh, lady caller, his, her name is Mary.
Yeah.
A top of Mary.
Right.
And we, we exchanged a couple of emails. It's quite a, quite a fun, uh, quite interesting. Uh, let me give you a little bit of background. Previously, we want to raise cattle. You know, Chuck is our neighbor. He, he told me, "Ah, I can help you to avoid tax by giving my cattle to be raised in your property. So, you, you should build a fence from my north to the south." So, I asked Ashley, "Can you check if somebody can build a fence for us?" Then he, Ashley came back, "Oh, there's a, a gentleman, can I help you?" You know how much it costs? It's fifteen thousand dollars. So, I, I thought, oh, fifteen thousand dollars. Then I talked to Mary. I said, uh, "Can you calculate, what's the difference between land use, agriculture land use, and a residential?" She calculated, only one thousand dollar per year, the, the difference. So, I think, oh, that means fifteen years for me to pay the difference, you know? So, then I changed my mind. I should not do any, uh, agriculture, so I did everything.
And so, that's all been settled with the Revenue Commissioner?
Yes, I, I paid the check already, I got it.
Brian, do you have other questions?
Not right now.
Uh, Rick, Mr. Kohler?
Uh, I'd, I'm, would just, uh, thank you. I would just like to, I'm trying to be clear. Did the applicant remove the building from the application, or the, the recreational building?
In the original, in the original application, I, it may, well, I feel like at some point, they were contemplating, um, additional guests in that other building. Is that correct? Was that your original plan?
Yes, original plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're, you've completely removed that, and basically what you're saying is that that, that accessory building would be a recreational room?
Yes.
Which your guests could use?
Yes, for, but nobody will live in that building, yeah. Al- although we put some beds over there, I don't, before our application, but we will cancel for the, for guests, or for recreation.
And to be clear, all, all the other, um, kind of, we'll call them temporary buildings, the yurt, the camper and all that stuff, that would not be a part of this at all?
No.
So, we're down to the house, and that's it, and then recreational use of the other building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, I think, um, and you don't mind not having outdoor music, uh, things like that?
Yes.
The, uh, you have, you're gonna put like a foosball table, or something like that in there, or a pool table, or whatever, so people can go down there and relax, and then, uh, come back to the house?
Yeah.
But not stay there?
No.
Okay. And the lighting, I don't know, I remember your lighting had normal floodlights, uh, on the application. I would, uh, would you be averse to having, uh, dark sky lighting, uh, on the house, which is down-shielded lighting that is not so bright, and doesn't go up, and?
I don't think that there should be a problem. The house is, you know, on the top of a small mountain, so everything is well protected. I think some, some, the house is quite similar to my neighbors. It's in quite high level, no flooding, right?
The, uh, the black light, the, uh, you, you mean the?
Yeah.
There is black light on the house now, but, yeah, but it's, uh, not, not like something very bright, a dark, dark sky. Yeah, yeah, uh, actually, we, we love the, uh, the, the stars in the sky, so we, we, we don't like the light.
Right, and so, and so do the neighbors, yeah. So, so when your guests come, and they, if they, I've seen many places where I'm going on vacation, where people just turn on the lights, and they leave them going outside, they're afraid. And if they did, I would want it to be a down shield, what they call a down shield, it, it points downward to the ground, yeah? And, and there's, there's organization that can help you do that, uh, you know?
No problem. I, I understand now. We have a light, when you, when people walk outside, you know, like, it will, uh,
It goes on.
turn on for thirty seconds, yeah, it, it turn, turn off. It, it's quite a shot, and it's turned on, it's not for, for the open public.
Okay. And, um, six people?
Yeah.
Uh, which is fine, the, I would think, um, the, uh, oh, is it multi, it would be one family, multifamily? Uh, how would you plan on renting it?
I, I have my.
You'd rent the whole house to one person, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because Ashley, uh, I mean, the property manager, potentially, she will manage the property for me in future. Maybe she has a better idea, if one family or two family, I don't know.
One, one family at a time, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this people usually only call one.
That's fine. And, um, I, uh, uh, you're not gonna have any cattle, so, uh, uh, I guess pets would, if people have, are you gonna allow pets? Dogs?
Yeah, it's possible.
Okay, uh, so I would think that you might wanna have a fence.
Yes.
For dogs, you know, so that they wouldn't go on the neighbor's property?
Yes.
Or chase cows, or anything like that. Okay, it doesn't have to be the whole property, but it could be an area around the house that would be secure.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, and Mr. Kohler, thank you for bringing up the, um, the lighting issue, because aside from the, the dark skies initiative, which you're, uh, a part in the county, um, I'll note that under one seventy dash fifty-three, A four, um, one of the contemplated conditions and restrictions that would be placed on, uh, special permits, whether an exception or use, uh, no, no, I'm for lighting of the site to include intensity and shielding, so it's not to adversely affect adjacent or nearby property owners. And that, for me, dovetails with sort of the position I staked out at our last meeting, um, my concern about just the location of the house so close to the property line, and, uh, not adversely affecting the neighbors, who we've now heard from twice. So, um, I appreciate you highlighting that. Do you have anything else right now?
No.
Okay, Ms. Ritter?
Hi, um, I was wondering, how often do you think you might be able to use your property?
If it's granted for short-term rental or not granted, uh, uh, for, for, only for us. But depend, depend if it's, uh, it's, uh, for short-term rental or not. If, if it's not for short rental, maybe we come here roughly one month, uh, once a month for ourselves.
So, you'll be checking on the place? In other words, if you haven't just rented every weekend, and you don't come down, I know you have a property manager, but it's a little bit different than, than if you come down. Um, so I'm wondering if you, what you're, what you think you might do?
We, we might, uh, uh, go here, uh, come here twelve months, and we will block the date. Yeah, in advance, so the guests cannot.
Okay. And then what, how do you feel about planting trees between yourself and your, your neighbor?
There's, there are some bushes there, uh, along the fence, you know, you can see in the picture, uh, but they are not very tall.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if you think it's necessary, we can consider.
Okay.
If you like your house. But so far, it's about this high?
Yeah.
Right, something like that?
Uh, yeah, if we plant some trees, we have to wait for them to grow up, right?
They have to be, uh, pretty fast growing, that's, yeah.
Okay.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Light?
Yes, thank you very much. I think we're heading in the right direction. I do feel like there's a little bit of still some confusion about what's actually in the application. When, if and when we get around to making a recommendation, I do encourage us to, they be explicit about these conditions. I know we like to ask what the applicant intends to do, and what they, what they said in the application, but I would just, uh, suggest that we, when we get there, we articulate those. those conditions, because as has been noted in several contexts, it is, it is within our right to set some of these parameters. And with respect to this last topic on the vegetative barrier that has, that is, has been pretty, pretty standard fare on a lot of these applications, especially for parking areas that are within view, uh, and things like Leeland cypress trees. There are fast growing trees that are used particularly for this, this type of screening purpose, so they are relatively fast growing, and I believe that is kind of what was alluded to, although, you know, there are trade offs with these sorts of things. So I think we're in the right track with respect to limiting the number, keeping it in the main house for any overnight accommodations, allowing the wrecked building for indoor activities, no unrestrained outdoor pets, and down shielded and otherwise dark sky friendly lighting all seem like, and, and I think we've still got a little room to wiggle on what the, what the quiet time would be, but it sounds like that's a consideration. Eight seems a little early, but I, I think certainly ten is, is well within the, the pale, and I do think that there is a natural opportunity for these provisions, because these on, online rentals usually have house rules for this sort of thing, so I think the recommendation would be that the house rules include these, these kinds of provisions on, on, on the guests, is how I would suggest we, we would articulate those.
Okay, so you're, what you're suggesting is that we would, we would very definitively and specifically, um, consistent with some of the stuff, the language in one seventy fifty-three, we outline conditions that would be attached to the permit, and then there would be an additional, um, condition that basically would state that the house rules would reflect those same conditions.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know how you deal with the pet issue if you're not here, and you know, that's a, that's an ongoing thing, so it's, it's, it kind of goes to the question of, you know, the operation, so somehow they have to implement if there's a pet rule of some sort, they're not gonna ban them, so how do we keep the pets from being, to me, it's, it's, it would be a condition of the use, that the use does not allow unrestrained pets. I guess maybe it's going beyond our, yeah, I, I think your summary is actually better, that, the, the mechanism for them to implement these rules would have to be.
The house rules reflected, yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything else right now?
No, that's all.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I'll just, I'll just tell you that at least at our last meeting, I, I stayed, I took the position that I, I opposed the application, and primarily because it's, it's, no, through, through no fault of your own, but just the physical location of the house so close to the property line. And now you, you can hear from my colleagues that all of these contemplated conditions or restrictions that we placed on you are intended to do whatever we can on behalf of a, a, another citizen, your neighbor, to make sure that if you do end up with a permit to operate a short term rental, um, that there are no adverse effects on them. And I, I am very grateful for your being so forthcoming, and I think you struck a very positive tone that I think should be encouraging to your neighbors.
Yeah.
And I think you can probably surmise from the property in its current state or the state in which you purchased it, that, um, I mean, let's just be blunt, um, your fine neighbors haven't had a great feeling about what's been going on next door, and so I hope you can understand that we're a welcoming community, but at the same time, I mean, sometimes people don't play by the rules and it can be very upsetting. So I, I'm grateful for the tone you've struck tonight, and grateful that you made the long trip to Rockville.
Yeah.
Um, A and J Restaurant, my favorite on Rockville Pike, I love that place. But, uh, no, we really appreciate, we appreciate you coming out, and, and I, I would think that your neighbors appreciate very much the tone you've struck, and it's obviously a small community?
Yeah.
And you're from Dongbei, and so, and I, and I know, I know that, I know that you can appreciate a natural environment like this, so everything we're doing is not to harass you or make life difficult, but ultimately, um, we, we are tasked, I believe, with doing everything in our ability to preserve the rural nature of Rappahannock County?
Yes.
While giving some wiggle room from time to time on things like this, because we recognize that to have open space, you have to have, you also have to have residents, and you also have to allow people to use their property within their property rights. So anyway, I just, I thank you for being so forthcoming and speaking with us, both of you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Sure, not a problem.
Um, I don't really have any comments, and I can kind of sense where this might go. If anyone has come up with a list of conditions and would like to frame a motion, and we, we can work through this and then summarize it cleanly, cleanly at the end. So if someone wants to just get started, Gary Light?
Sure.
I was gonna defer to Gary.
Okay.
You were, okay. I move that we recommend approval of this application, subject to the following conditions. One is that the application, the limits in the application be, be made conditions of the permit, that's one, just as an aside, sorry, break from the motion. Because the application says a lot of things, those are not necessarily required of you unless we say they are required of you. So this condition is, you have to do what you said you're going to do. And specifically, this is the limit of the overnight guests to six overnight guests, limited overnight accommodations in the main house, no overnight guests in anything other part of the property. Use of other buildings beyond the main house is limited to the daytime recreational use, or sorry, not daytime, just recreational use of the, of the recreation, recreation building. And let's say we require any outside lighting to be down shielded or otherwise dark sky friendly. Condition of no, no unrestrained pets outside the structure. The establishment of a vegetative buffer along the property line with the neighboring property. And, um.
Would you, can you add some specificity, planting of?
Yeah, so sufficient height to protect the, the view, so maybe vegetative tree buffer.
A tree buffer, yes.
Tree buffer. And with respect to, um, quiet, well, let's say no, I'm not sure how to get to the noise question.
I might, I might think no amplified music outside.
No.
But I think that's, that should be an absolute.
No amplified outdoor music. I think the application itself limits the number of non overnight guests to twice the number of residents, so that has a natural limit on the party that's in the application. That's another topic that I don't know that we need to establish here, but, um, so I'm not going to suggest we add that, but I'm gonna stop there and open it up to my colleagues who might wanna add something.
All right.
And no, no food service as, as, no food as well.
Okay, um, why don't we, why don't we just call that a discussion and not a motion yet, since we're?
Oh, and sorry, there's one more since, while we're at it.
Just staff recommendations.
Yeah, so the staff, yeah, the other staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations.
Permit terminate upon the sale.
Yeah.
Um, by reference, staff recommendations, and then, um, and then house rules, house rules shall, shall reflect, um, any, any limitations or conditions relevant to your overnight guests. And I would, I'm glad you highlighted the, the non resident guest thing. I don't, I'll, I'll just say I think that, and I'll just put it out there, and you, you all can tell me if it doesn't work, but I would, I would like to limit, limit the use of the property to the overnight guests, period, because otherwise what are you doing? You're basically inviting a party.
Yeah.
So, I mean, because if, if it's, if six people in the house, and then they can still invite another twelve people over, it, we kind of, I, I just think that's odd, but.
I, you know, as someone who has occasionally done an out, you know, an overnight, it's, it's.
Natural to invite.
Pretty natural to have some other daytime guests, not, and that's far from a party, you know, even having dinner or something, or, or, you know, people come by, so I don't know, I, I struggle with this, I think, I think we got, and I'm not sure, is that, is that twice the number of overnight guests? Is that now baked into the regulation, into the requirement? So this is now a requirement?
It is, under, under the.
One seventy sixty-six K.
Okay, and that was revised, that's part of the main amendments, or? Okay, um, all right, so that, we can't even, we can't even.
I mean, I think we could go beyond that, but at least we have that, and at the time we thought that was the right balance.
All right, I'm not going to, I'm not gonna caveat our code, our ordinance, okay? So, um, for discussion, um, thank, thanks everyone.
Somebody else gets to do the motion now, since.
You did the, you did the omen's word. So overnight guests limited to six, limited to the main house, um, the accessory buildings shall be used only for recreational purposes.
Well, just, and just the recreational building, not the your.
Right, right.
So it's just the, the, whatever we're calling it, recreational.
So only recreational buildings should be used for that purpose, no use of any other structures on the property by overnight guests, is how I'd phrase that. Outside lighting shall be down shielded, no unrestrained pets outside of the main house, and I think that's, I think you stated that well, Mr. Light. And then a tree buffer, that'll, that'll obviously require some effort on, on your part, a tree buffer between you and, and, and the, the neighbor, no, uh, no outdoor music. Staff recommendations are incorporated by reference, and then the house rules shall reflect any of these conditions that would be relevant or applicable to your overnight guests. That's, it, it sounds like a lot, but I think it's all reasonable, I know.
Yeah, we don't, we won't require the guest.
You have no amplified music outside, no music after ten, you know, that period.
I'm sorry, do you wanna, you, you can modify that, I'm just summarizing.
I'm just trying to keep it a little bit quiet in the evening.
Okay.
So if you had no, no amplified music during the day, and after a certain time, there'd be no music, here, outside, you know? After, I don't know what time, nine o'clock, something like that, ten o'clock, whatever.
The more residents I know go silent at, at seven, right, every night?
We were just at the meeting, we had a very nice sign outside that said noise ordinance.
Whatever.
Please keep voices to a reasonable level after ten P M.
Okay, so.
So I had to count my kids' concerts.
Yeah. We'll just say no, something like, no, no outdoor noise, or no, no outdoor music or noise after ten P M.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and I think that.
And no food service. Was one of the, the staff recommendations, no, no food service.
What's just stated explicitly, even if it's kind of double counting?
Yeah, so.
So it's an even number, it, they're ten items. We try to, we try to make it easy to follow. So with that, I'm gonna, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals, approval of this permit, um, with, the special use permit with the following conditions, overnight guests limited to six, overnight guests limited to the main house, um, guests, the recreational auxiliary building shall be used only for that purpose, um, no, uh, no overnight guest use of any of the other structures on the property, um, outside lighting shall be down shielded, no unrestrained pets outside, um, we are asking you to put up a vegetation slash tree barrier buffer between you and the neighbors, um, no, uh, no amplified outdoor music, period, um, no outdoor music or excessive noise after ten P M. Your house rules shall reflect any of these conditions that would apply normally to your overnight guests, and finally, um, we are incorporating by reference any other staff recommendations that are not covered herein.
And I think the conditions otherwise presented in the application.
And that's, there you go, so we might be to eleven or twelve.
Sorry. It's always a round number.
So that's correct, so any other, any other conditions that are, that are already outlined in your application, so that's a motion.
I mean, I just ask a, a question, are fires in the staff recommendation, no fire, outdoor fires and things like that?
There's no excessive bonfire.
I don't know, I'm just curious.
Not really a facility for that, uh, in this case, but, you know, if it's something we're concerned about, I, I don't think it's unreasonable. I don't think we've done it in other cases, though, so.
It's, I mean, the way I look at it is, it's, it's agricultural, well, it's a, it's a rural property, and I, I mean.
Oh, firearms?
Wow, I mean.
That's part of the, those are required.
I think those are part of the, there's a, there's a list of standard requirements now in the.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, that's what I was asking, if that was in there.
Yeah.
The fires.
Firearms and.
Firearms.
Can you take a look at firearms quickly?
Firearms is in that.
Night firearms, I don't think it's in there.
Fire extinguisher.
What's that?
I wouldn't want people building a property on, a fire on my property.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, people don't know what they're doing.
Right.
And that's, and we've had that problem in the county, too.
Yeah.
Just like no open exterior fires or?
No, no outdoor fires.
Or use of firearms.
That's fine.
Are you stating those as conditions?
I'll, I'll amend my motion, include no outdoor fires and no firearms, and we're probably up to fourteen now, but.
It keeps the peace.
I don't think you say no firearms. I think you say no shooting of firearms.
No shooting, well, no shooting of firearms.
No shoot, no discharge of firearms and no outdoor fires, okay? And, um, and again, this is just our recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they might, might do their own modifications, so, welcome to local government. Okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Ah, good job.
Thanks, everyone, for your thoughtful comments, and again, to the applicants and the neighbor for trying to work this out.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? I'm, I'm about to, okay. Um, all those in favor, say hi. Hi, any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Summers is your primary contact person?
Sure.
And, and so you can send her an email, and she'll explain to you the process from here, and I wish you the best of luck. Xi xie ni mei. Uh, zhen xi xiye, wu chao dao shi jian lao. Xi xie, okay. Okay, shang yi si jian.
Can I have one comment, two questions, two quick questions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one comment, uh, last month, when Ashley told us our application was tabled because some questions?
Right.
Uh, I had a discussion with my wife. I, I said, if I were the neighbor, I will have the same concern, so I'm quite sympathetic with my neighbor, I agree. If I were her, I will have a same concern.
Good, and, and we sensed that from you.
Yeah, it's a kind of mutual understanding, so we fully support it, so that's one comment. Two question, regarding a tree buffer, faster tree buffer, how long should we build a buffer? Because it's quite long for a property.
Yeah, yeah.
Only between the house, how long, how do we define that?
You, maybe talk to your neighbor and, you can, yeah.
So we can.
They're very nice people. Yeah, so why don't, why don't you talk about that, because it's, obviously, it's, it's in your mutual interest to get along, and we'll stay out of those details.
You, you don't want us to start telling you exactly.
Yeah.
Trust me.
We need your guidance, there are some principles.
Yeah, but, no, you've set a good tone, and I, and I think if you just have an open dialogue with your neighbors, and I, yeah.
And a lot of this is for your rulebook for when people come.
Yes.
So they know that they cannot do these things.
Right, and that's part of it, your house rules have to reflect all of these things, so.
Yeah. My last question, how long it will take for this process?
Um, I think, so it's, I believe they should be on the agenda for the B Z A next month.
Yeah, July.
July.
July means another round of approval, or? July means another round of approval, or we have to come here again, or?
Yeah, it'll be the Board of Zoning Appeals, they meet here, right?
Oh, we need to come.
July twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, July twenty-seven.
Yeah, I know, I know. So.
Okay.
Yeah, but just, uh, thank you for your patience, thank you for coming out, and, um, and we really do appreciate you being here, it made a big difference to hear from you directly, so thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you, the neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe after the COVID nineteen, go away, we will have a party in my property, you got your family.
No parties, though. Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay, thanks, thanks for, thanks for coming out. My muck, my muck, okay, thank you. Okay, um, next, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, I know Ms. Jones had, was, uh, going to make some general comments, so we'll go ahead and open the general public comment, period, sorry to be a stickler, okay, so if you want to continue. No, it's, that was related to that application, so this is now general, go ahead. Yep, Lisa, Lisa Jones, Piedmont District.
So, um, the other thing I just want to say is that about the dark skies, I do thank you very much for bringing it up. I just think it should be built, it should be baked in on the application. I loo, I read the application, there's also a typo, and then, on the application that was posted, it said Hampton District, um, on, on handwritten one, but, um, uh, on, on the one that was posted, but anyway, uh, so it should be baked in. The, the second thing I do want to say is, when I looked at this application, and I looked at the plot of land that's being done here, it's, I did not go and research all the deeds and the tax numbers, but it's, it's probably a family subdivision that's been, um, now where it is today. Uh, if you look at it, it's straight line, twelve acre plots, boom, 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 boom. And, um, I, you know, I just want to say that a family subdivision is still a subdivision, and that, um, you know, our first principle, um, in our comprehensive plan is to encourage agricultural operations, ensure the preservation of productivity, availability, and use of agricultural lands for continued production of agricultural products. And in fact, the, um, Code of Virginia, that is a declaration of legislative intent in the Code of Virginia fifteen dot two, twenty-two hundred, that agriculture and forestal land be preserved.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I understand that your ordinance stuff is coming up, and that there was a, a, I read the Berkeley Report, and I understand there was a little thing now, maybe should use the Berkeley Report and make the subdivision, the family subdivision a way to, a little easier, and I just want to say that I have some real issues with the way we do it today. Um, per the Berkeley Report, um, it's really, you, and I, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm doing the best I can with this, but as I understand it, is that per the Code of Virginia, you can prohibit once a subdivision is made, from that being sold to a non-family member for fifteen years. And in our division, we allow, we qualify someone to be able to do a subdivision after five years of ownership, and then they can sell it in two years, and I'm sorry, folks, that's an investment. That's not what we hope for in a family subdivision. And I, I just, I just want to go on the record right now to say I have some real concerns about that, that is too short a period of time, and I don't think it matches the intent of a family subdivision. So, uh, that's the main thing I want to say.
Point well taken, yeah, and I would, I would just encourage you to, um, remain involved, because the, the first step of that Berkeley group study is what they call the diagnostic, and so our challenge will be to schedule work sessions, which we'll talk about a bit later, and start kind of drilling down in it, in, in, into discreet areas of both zoning subdivision organs, including family subdivisions, so as we go through that process, just pay attention, and certainly come out, and, and when we get to that area.
Ten and twelve acre, acre farmettes is doomed.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
And if you look at that plot, go look at that plot, because it looks just like the big billboard that says farmettes available now, so.
Alright, thanks for coming.
If I may make a recommendation, I've, I've, I have found that putting things in writing, like getting the ordinance as it is now, writing in in red what you think it should be, and submitting it, is a lot better way to get your point across, and to have it actually read and recorded, whereas in this case, it's, you know, you've spoken it, we've heard it, but it, it's in minutes maybe, but it goes away.
Great.
Alright, thanks for coming out.
It's also really helpful.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to comment on any matters of interest to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Anita Ramos from the Hampton District.
Did he make the paper?
I see you.
First of all, I'm sorry that Ms. Ishi is not here this evening.
Yeah.
I really want to say, I, 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 I love all the attorneys that I've ever known, I think, and she is one of the ones that digs in the weeds.
Yeah.
As the, the best, and I'm sorry we're gonna lose her, I think Mr. Sis will bring us different strengths, but I think she ought to know that there are people that have appreciated the work she does, and how diligent she's been, especially about me, meeting minutes, I mean, it's amazing. Um, two things that are just kind of off the wall in a way. Um, Washington Post Business Section, Sunday, June twelfth, two front page articles. One's about the Netherlands, now, why do I want to point out the Netherlands? This is an area in the Netherlands that was reclaimed from the sea, and is a very rich agricultural area, and has been around for, been used for thirty, forty years, something like that. A proposal came to them to build data centers. We've been worried about solar, you know.
Right.
Now the world is gonna have to get, we have to worry about data centers all around us, and I don't expect us to get any, but you never know. Uh, but the thing is that there, they were going to build data centers that were gonna be the length of two hundred and forty-some football fields. Now, I don't know if that was soccer fields or American football fields, but I suspect being with the Netherlands, it was soccer fields. But still, a huge amount, and if you go through what was once beautiful Loudoun County, it's disgusting what you see there, and I know we need data centers, but as a child of the Cold War, I grew up knowing that the center of the Pentagon was gonna be the place that was gonna get hit, and everybody in Fairfax would be gone anyway, now I figure aim at Loudoun County, that'll, that'll put the country up really quick, and so anyway, um, just a thought that, that when these people come in on these data centers and want one, and I know Culpeper has been looking at some proposal, I don't know where that's gone. Um, and Prince William, of course, in their agricultural area is dealing with the idea of a data center, that we just need to be forever vigilant, is my point. And, um, take a look at that comprehensive plan, take a look at the, at, at the proposed, um, parts of the zoning, and do the best. And the second thing, which is kind of a closer to home type of thing, is the other article was down here at the bottom, rent hikes put mobile homeowners in a vice. And what it basically says is that the owners, you know, people own their own mobile homes, and we do have a mobile home community here, and I don't know what their deal is, I'm very familiar with Waples Mill in Fairfax City. Um, they own their building, but they don't own the land, and they're renting it, and these people have rents that have gone from three hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand. And these are people who are living on, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month, social security, and they're just, and they don't know where to go. Um, we need to keep in mind, especially as Planning Commission, that low-income people in this county can get out of here, because they won't have anywhere to go. And this is just an example of it, we know tech, that, know that rents are going up all over the country in every kind of way, but the fact that, it, it hit me about an article about mobile homes is, um, there's a lot of them strewn around the countryside, and we only have one that I know of, but it's something to just keep in the back of your minds, that we are not the, these, the days and times are not helping low-income people, and they're slowly getting pushed, who knows where. But it's certainly not gonna be being pushed into Rappahannock County, for sure, because of where, you know, where the rents are now, and how few there are that people could possibly afford. So anyway, a little soapbox, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your comments and for always coming out. Anyone else wishing to speak during the general public comment, period? Um, Ward of Attrition Knowles left to speak, um, alright, thank you, I'll close the public comment, period. Um, next on the agenda is and I believe this is you, thank you for your patience, um, we tried to move quickly here, and is your last name pronounced Miss, Miss Ervy?
Miss Ervy.
Missouri, I was close, okay, so this is a preliminary review of special use permit twenty-two dash zero six dash zero one Missouri, tax map number thirty-seven dash forty-four tourist home. Um, applying under one seventy sixty-six K and, and the other, um, applicable provisions of the county zoning ordinance. Um, uh, Ms. Summers, if you could just, um, rough, rough in some of the, the background information on this application?
So, this application was actually submitted right after the changes were made to the ordinance requiring, um, that, uh, home be, if it's on, you know, not on a state road, it has to be on, uh, if it's on private road, it has to meet the type two road standard, so this one's been kind of hanging out on the back burner for a while, and we finally have brought it forward, um. She is proposing, it's an existing home, she's proposing to use as a three, um, bedroom tourist home. This is ranked, um, by Off the Grid Restaurants, that property through that area, um, it has, actually, this parcel has three different zoning districts upon it, it has highway commercial, it has, um, R R five, and then it has, uh, conservation in the back, actually, we're, the house that sits in the R R five zoning district. Um, she did hire a contractor who came out and did some upgrades and work on the road, I went out and took a look at the road, um, and finally, we are able to bring it forward to, uh, for reading.
So your, your review of the road, um, confirms that it now meets the type two standard? In terms of crown and all the other, okay?
Yes.
You used to Robbie ever respond? Did, did Mr. Roby ever get back to you?
Uh, he did, I found that he, um, actually had a family emergency, and that's why I didn't hear from him.
Okay.
And he called me from the hospital, feeling, uh, uh, his father, and, um,
I'm sorry.
He's very courageous, and we talked all about the legaments that, uh, and, and so, uh, yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, go ahead.
And if I'm not mistaken, um, I actually took some pictures that would be beneficial to the, um, the commissioners of, of the property, you do cross a bridge, you get across the creek of falls, um. This old house right here, is that the other, the other, um, older abandoned white house to the right of your proposed rental, is that what the, the lane, actually, the o, only other residence that was supposed to serve?
That was the original house, um, you know, it's a little, um, house to the right of, of the house that was built to replace that, and the original driveway, which is a very gradual driveway, um, goes up to that house, but, you know, that was, you know, there was a more modern one, for me.
It looks a little sideways.
It's quite a slope, sorry.
Well anyways, that's, that's your house, is it on your property?
No, so that's the little ha, uh, little original house that is not really viable at this point, and they built another house to kind of replace the one redness that was allowed, um.
But is this, this house is on your property, though, the?
The little one, yeah, the little one, it's, it's not, you know, viable, that's the house that is rented, so I live to the east, I, I live myself, my house is next door to this, this house, and then there's that house, and then the little house that's not viable, and then the, kind of, here again.
Was that better?
I guess what I was getting at was those two, that little house that's not viable, and the red house are on the same property that belongs to you.
That's right.
And there's no other properties that use that driveway.
No, occasionally, um.
That's all.
You know, Melbourne, Atkins, and I will share, you know, they'll come in on my driveway, if you want to, I'll come in on his. You know, he has his own, so.
Okay.
How many, how many other residents live on Parkway Lane?
In fact, Parkway Lane is just the name of the driveway, I, I'm not sure it had something to do with
Okay.
Um, but it, it's just really the.
But your, but your driveway is shared with other residents, correct?
No.
No, it's not, okay, maybe I'm thinking of a different.
So would you turn off two eleven on Parkway, you literally, it's like a driveway straight up to the house, and that's it?
Oh, okay.
But it does front on two eleven?
They have a rights, people name their roads whatever they want, private lanes.
There's like the Old Emporia, there's Hall, whatever, uh, whatever it's called.
Old way, yeah, I, I, I might have been thinking about a different application where there was a lot of neighbor interest, because it was a shared road, so that's not this, okay?
I mean, the fact that this is a named lane, I mean, if the property fronts on two eleven, I would argue that it is on a state, right?
Yeah, no, I was, I was simply trying to recall, 'cause I, I remember an application down in that neck of the woods where it was a, it was a, do you remember the one I talked about?
Completely different.
Okay, that's all, that's, that was my only question, okay, thank you. Uh, because that goes to how we're gonna handle this, because if there are no na, no, wh- wh- where's your nearest neighbor?
Um, so, I'm the neighbor on the other side, and then on the other side, Melbourne Atkins is for, um, let's see, it's equal to six acres, and then there's that little house that is not used, and then he's on the other side of that.
Have you talked to everyone around you about your plan to do this?
Melbourne is the most wonderful neighbor in the town, and certainly when I first bought it, I told them that initially, I owned an off-the-grid restaurant, we thought we might have two employees that we could rent to, we could get finding houses for, for a week.
Right.
And that didn't work out at that time, and might in the future, but then we realized, well, we could at least have, um, a tourist home for now, so far after I've done the renovations, I've really just had family or friends come and stay there. But initially, I told them about the plan.
Okay.
And, um, you know, he, um, he's, he's a.
So it doesn't sound like there's gonna be a lot of, of public interest in this, um.
Knowledge was to, you know.
Right, anyone have any other questions? Well, w- we always reach this point, so, um, it's so the pro, I mean, the, this is, this is, this step that you're part of, just so you know, we're, we're trying, we're in the process, process of eliminating this step, so that when people like you come to a planning commission meeting, we just have a public hearing, period. Um, for exactly this reason, because it's an extra step, and on things like this that are relatively straightforward, seems rather inefficient, unfortunately, we haven't made that change yet, 'cause it's an ordinance change, so it's gonna take a little time, but, um, um, so, we either will, um, schedule a public hearing tonight for next month, or move this onto the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation, so I'll leave it to my colleagues to pave the way.
Well, I'd like to move that we move it on to the B Z A.
Okay, and do you, with a recommendation?
Move the staff recommendations.
Um, my point is for approval, or?
Oh, oh, for approval, sorry.
For approval.
If I could request, given the nature of this.
Somebody want to just second the motion for discussion?
Uh, no, I don't want to quite second that motion.
I'm sorry, you're looking for a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion, discussion, go ahead.
My request would be, I know we're trying to streamline this process, but given the, the fact that we don't quite know the, the roads standards, I mean, I think we have a pretty good handle on it, I would be more comfortable forwarding it to the B Z A without a recommendation, but without taking the extra step of having a public hearing.
I can move the vote.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Ritter, do you want to amend your motion, so that's, uh, move it on to the Board of Zoning Appeals with no recommendation?
Yeah, I amend my motion.
Okay.
Thank you, with that, I can support it.
I'll, I'll second the amended motion, any other discussion? Here none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there. So, um, you'll go to the Board of Zoning Appeals next and, and then they'll, they'll, basically the staff recommendations are already laid out and whether or not they go beyond those will be up to them. So it's just a neutral, we moved on in a neutral way to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Was that on the twenty-seventh of July?
Yes.
Because I believe that that was a wedding, family wedding that I'm going to, so I, I have to check because I, I can't remember, but would I ask that it be delayed?
Yeah, you can delay it till August.
Schedule it for a public hearing.
Okay, we can hold it till August.
Okay, so I'll go in August.
Yeah, and they'll, and they'll have a, and they'll have a public hearing, which will then give you some indication of anyone in your neck of the woods is concerned.
Or would I, I mean, I would be, I should be at that.
Ideally, yeah. I, I think, yeah.
There'll, there'll all be one there, right?
There's only going to be one hearing left.
Yeah, right, right.
We do recommend dark sky lighting.
What's that?
Dark skies lighting.
Absolutely. I'm thinking of that. I, I I replaced the ones that were pointed up with turning down ones, but I'm really not sure that they are lumen quality. You know, there's a certain lumen that you're supposed to keep.
Uh, call, call me. Call me and I'll give you a, the person to call that, that will, will get them changed for you.
Because I did my own problem.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks a lot, thanks.
Thank you so much.
To the right people to get it done.
And thanks for your economic investment in the community. Thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda, and Michelle, I'll just jump in on this.
Feel free.
Yeah, so, um, this, this is, uh, item two under new business. This is a preliminary discussion and this comes from my colleagues and me on board of supervisors. This is a preliminary discussion for a zoning ordinance amendment related to vehicle access to events and, the background here is that, um, we, we have been, um, in Rappahannock County and, and other rural counties like ours. We're seeing a proliferation of agritourism, farm winery, farm brewery, um, type sites that logically attract a lot of people and a lot of vehicles. And as I think you all know, um, the Code of Virginia really constrains our ability from a zoning enforcement perspective to put the brakes on agritourism businesses and, and farm and farm wineries and, and farm breweries and, and so there's been this tension, um, in the community about how do you, if we're, if, if the Code of Virginia precludes us from, um, from regulating from a zoning perspective, these, the growing number of agritourism, farm winery, farm brewery type businesses, well, what the heck can we do to make sure that we're still fulfilling our obligation as members of Board of Supervisors to protect, um, public health and safety, which I think is our most important job? And so, um, Mr. Goth and Mr. Curry, um, really at my request, um, dug deep into this question of how, um, legally can the county, um, try to put at least some, uh, restrictions or standard, uh, probably a better way to put it, standards on, on, uh, traffic and vehicle access to, uh, to events that would occur anywhere in the county. And it's important to note that this, this applies to all zoning districts, not just ag or conservation or otherwise, all zoning districts. And so I think that the proposal, which, um, the Board of Supervisors unanimously sent to the Planning Commission for further consideration, again, ordinance amendments within the, the zoning ordinance must go to the Planning Commission for review. But we, we've sent this down to the Planning Commission, um, with a five, a five-zero vote that, uh, you know, for us to look at this urgently here. And if you pull up, um, in Board Docs or if you've already reviewed it, it's really quite a minor, um, ordinance change, at least in terms of what would be, um, what would be changed. And there's a very nice one-page memo from Mr. Curry on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. And you'll note at the bottom that there are two areas that would change. And first, there would be a definition under one seventy dash eight B, traffic event impacting safe access. Any gathering that attracts ten or more motor vehicles, motorcycles or motor homes or any combination of such vehicles. The definition of motor vehicles, motorcycles and motor homes shall be as stated, Code of Virginia section forty-six point two dash one hundred. Okay, so it establishes the definition, traffic event impacting safe access. Next, one seventy dash twenty-four, and this is really the substance of the proposed, uh, ordinance change. Frontage or approved access required. Add paragraph two, in all zoning districts for access to any traffic event impacting safe access, private streets, roads and travelways or lanes used shall be maintained in such a way that vehicles may pass each other on the all-weather surface. And this is a first crack at language and really the principle here is to ensure, um, that if you have a gathering, uh, call it a, a large gathering or a, a gathering of a crowd defined by vehicles, because we believe from a zoning enforcement perspective, you can enforce, you can enforce this provision through a vehicle count as opposed to a people count. The idea is that if something bad happens and emergency services needs to get to that property or something bad happens and people need to get away from the property, that the, 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 the access must allow for two vehicles to pa- to pass. Which means that if you are having regular big events at the end of a, a tiny little lane, um, you're probably not going to, probably not going to meet the requirements of this provision. And ultimately, again, it is for all zoning districts. It's, it would be, it would be a blanket, uh, a blanket standard, uh, for events and access to such events, um, so that we don't run into potential disastrous consequences from an emergency services perspective. And one, one area of discussion that came up as we decided to move this on to you all, the Planning Commission, was, well, what about like Benvenu point-to-point race or, uh, the July fourth celebration over at Benvenu? And Mr. Goth, uh, I think, uh, made a, uh, uh, took a good stab at how we could, um, and, and this is something we could all, all do here. Basically, the, the exception would be for events at which, uh, emergency services are already pre-located or some, you know, phrasing.
Doesn't Benvenu also have two entries?
Yeah, and that might be the case. Somebody brought that up as an example because.
One's sixty feet wide, the other one's.
Yeah, so that might not be a good example, but the idea is if you have like, I'm not a horse person, but I've been to a few of these things and sometimes you're out in a field and you're driving through farm buildings and it's really a narrow little lane, so what do you do there? Well, if you have fire and rescue or the sheriff already there, then that potentially would be a carve-out or an ex- we'll call it an exception.
If they're there for the event.
Right, yeah, pre-positioned or pre-located or however you want to phrase it. So I just want to, that's all I want to say, other than, I, I think this is super important and it's, um, and I think all members of Board of Supervisors agree it's important because we are, we are precluded it, to a large extent from any, um, zoning-related, uh, enforcement of activities that are deemed agritourism-related. And so then the question is, okay, if the Code of Virginia basically says we can't do anything about big gatherings that are under the umbrella of agritourism or any other big gatherings, at least we should have the right to preserve public health and safety. And this goes to that point and we believe that this is defensible and this is allowed under the Code of Virginia. This is one area of public safety where we are allowed, um, to put the brakes a little bit on some of these larger events that otherwise go completely unregulated.
Well, um, I have a couple of things. One is, have, has there actually been a problem? But the other is, I, this seems to really overreach it. The, uh, fox hunters, for instance, will have a meet where they're going to be, I'm telling you, more than ten motor vehicles. And they meet down lanes that are single lanes. And you can get off on the field if you want to get, and God knows, they've had many, you know, rescue vehicles come to help them and I, there are lots of examples, you know, like we have a, a board, when we, we, our boarding, uh, business was going great guns. Uh, you know, every weekend there'd be ten cars on.
Well, and that's, that's why we're here. And so, um, what I, what I think, I, I just wanted to introduce this because, um, we do feel strongly about it on Board of Supervisors, um, that we need, we need to, um, we need to do something from a public health and safety perspective. And this was, this was really an initial draft.
Yeah.
And we recognize that there, what we don't want, we recognize there will be unintended consequences. And I think our job is preserving the spirit of this, but trying to anticipate potential unintended consequences like those you just described. Um, and then coming up with a final work product that we're comfortable putting out for a public hearing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I would just say, think about it. We'll keep it here, isn't it? Go ahead.
And I mean, you know, ten, I think that was just a suggestion, something to work off of. You may feel that twenty or twenty-five may, maybe the more appropriate number.
Right.
You know, I actually tried to find something that, I, because I totally get what you're trying to do. Just, just look at other rural counties. I didn't even, uh, Rockingham County to see if they had.
That's a good idea.
But I couldn't find anything, um. And I wondered if Gary, Gary Curry had come up with it. I mean, I just couldn't.
Well, I think what you're going to see, I, I anticipate that we won't, we won't, we're probably not the first to go this direction and we won't be the last because rural counties in Virginia are now contending with
Yeah.
this problem, which is you've got lots of, lots of unregulated
Yeah.
activity in all zoning districts that presents a public safety risk. And, um, so, does anyone else have any initial comments on this?
Why was motorcycles included?
I think it's, I think it's just the.
I guess it could be counting the big three-wheeler, big boys or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think it probably, my guess is because there's that citation to the Code of Virginia, so I'm guessing that there's sort of a collective phrasing in Code of Virginia.
Sixty definitions there for different vehicles.
Yeah, so I, I mean, but that's another. Um, yes, Ms. Ramos, you deserve an exception to the rules. Go ahead.
Couple of thoughts. First of all, the difference between public events and private events or private things. So for instance,
Fair point.
A business like boarding lawn that may have fifteen, twenty cars on it every day, every Saturday can be one thing that one can say, well, those are private events or somebody having a family reunion.
Well, we talked about family reunions.
Maybe you all touched on it before.
Yeah.
I think that's where we've got to get some language and the difference between.
Yeah, there's got to be something to happen.
And also, I just, uh, my, as a horse person, my non-jumping late husband used to say, I don't understand why you people jumping around from field to field. There's always a gate somewhere. And a good example is a property like Benvenu where if you look around, there's not just those two entrances, there's other places to enter and exit, maybe not so pretty. You know, not really roads. Um, and I remember also, I believe it was Windsor Farm, uh, some years ago.
Yeah.
Where there's a difficulty about the road it was on, but they have a gate access, I think to five twenty-two.
Yeah.
Something big.
Yeah.
And, and I think the fire department or something said, well, we can get there from here. I have, unfortunately, been around many a fall on the field and have been the one standing out on the road as the emergency, you know, when the vehicle shows up and I go open a gate and say, the ground's safe enough for your ambulance.
Right.
Go out to that, out in the field, rather than going around Robinson Farms, those.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's something to take into account. And as fox hunters know, these days we have second and third fields and the only way they can get anywhere on properties is to go through gates because they're not jumping. So almost any place that you, of course, someone can get to you somehow pretty well. So I mean, that's.
Good, that's all good.
Some of us know that well.
Well, and that's all good feedback and that's why we're bringing it up now. Yeah, is it? Thank you. Anyone else?
I can see how just some wineries, it seems to me, some of them have really a driveway. You know, that's not very big. I mean, I don't think it meets the standard.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, where they might have ten or twenty cars or thirty cars and they've got,
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's a two-way driveway. It could be, but I'd have to really look at them, but those are things that we're going to run into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I like the spirit of it. I think there's some way to get to this. I do think the nature of the event might be a way, although that starts to undermine, maybe reveal the true intent rather, and, and there could be some issues with singling out certain types of events. Uh, but I'm wondering, uh, it, it seems to imply, but it's, I think, arguable that it really means for the entire length. You know, it's sort of where it says you can pass, but it doesn't say anywhere between the state road and the event, so that, that seems to be the intent, but I think we'd want to deal with that.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure if you're talking about where it's actually hitting the hard road, that access point, because if you're indeed in a field, there's plenty of room to pass, you know, that's, that's why I was a little confused myself.
And, and I guess, I don't know, also, I didn't look this up, maybe you all did. I'm just curious where the all-weather surface road definition came from, because that's not defined. That would seem to be, need to be a pretty important term to define.
That's pretty important.
I, I, I knew, I, I knew last week the origin of, um, yeah, and there, and there's some thought put into that. I, I can't recall right now what it is.
To me, that's another one that we'd have to drill down.
Yeah, it's intentional. It's intentional.
Yeah, because you don't want everybody to start.
Idea. I think we should pursue it and try to figure out how they work.
Okay, good. That's great. Okay, well, thanks. I knew I was surrounded by thoughtful people and you've just proved it, so. Okay, great. So, um, I think with that, I'd like to, um, just open the floor to Mr. Kohler briefly. Um, he sent me an email, um, sort of, uh, lighting a fire again for more work sessions and we'd gotten into a bit of a routine. Obviously, we heard from the Berkeley Group recently, so that, um, precluded us from getting back to the sign ordinance, but go ahead, Rick, and, yeah, tell us what's on your mind and maybe we can all agree how to proceed.
Thank you. I, I would just like to suggest that we need a, a, a way to get a little more work done.
Yeah.
And, uh, sometimes a short period of time, you can accomplish some things or at least come to agreement on some things that you can get done at a larger session. And I was thinking that, uh, it would be wise if we could meet at six. A lot of us live here anyway and it's not that hard, uh, to, um, or work here. And, um, we could meet at six to six fifty
Yes.
and then have a ten-minute break before the meeting. And that gives us fifty minutes to get stuff done. Maybe, maybe go, if it was the sign ordinance, we could go through some more definitions or go through whatever little sections we want to do and all those little things that we do will add up to big things and then we'd have some, we still have to schedule some regular special meetings, but I think, I think it's, I find it annoying to have to wait this long for the meeting.
I know, yeah.
I bet Michelle does too, you know? So it'd be nice to just go ahead and get a few more things done.
I think it's a good idea and I, I feel like, I know I've tried to push for work sessions during the interim period between monthly meetings, but I also recognize it feels burdensome. Um, it really does. And, and so I think your proposal is quite all in because what, when the third Wednesday comes around, we're all committed and anyway, and so it means just
Got to be here.
eating earlier.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what do you guys, what do you all think?
Great idea.
Could, could I comment?
Yeah, of course.
I, um, I think it's essentially moving our meeting time up, which
Well, that's, I'd, I'd have to.
Would be, uh, I think really is the answer. And to me, I, I'm, I'm fine with moving the start time up. I don't see that it buys us any more time because just, I mean, just like we get here and we've been at it two and a half hours, it's not so much the time as the duration or whatever it turns out to be. I mean, if it, if we're talking about, you know, we used to meet from seven to nine and now we're going to meet from six to eight, are we really going to work, meet from six to nine to get the additional time because we're still going to have the same fatigue factor? So I think it's a nice idea. I'm fine with the idea of moving the meeting time up and trying to get more in these meetings and start them earlier. But I don't see it as going to make any difference in getting work done, like a separate work session that would be an hour or two that allows us to drill down on these things. So I'm fine with the proposal, but I, I think it's, it's insufficient to the task of, uh, a true work session.
So we have, I guess we have two choices. We could, as Mr. Kohler said, and I would have. So we have, I guess we have two choices. We could, as Mr. Kohler said, and I would have to review with uh Mr. Curry to make sure that we get front-end uh, uh, notice meeting with a work session. I'm not sure how that would work. But that's one option, then the other option is, so, and, and I feel like we've been fairly disappointed about this is just scheduling work sessions during the interim period. So what I'll do is, um, I appreciate your input and the idea. So I, I, I wanna just run it by Mr. Curry because he's quite good on, on sort of, sort of meeting, notice, scheduling stuff and see what he thinks and um, and we'll, we'll implement something.
I'm just looking for a way to do it.
I know, I agree.
And maybe we could even uh, uh, you know, maybe we could just schedule out three or four meetings, like we're gonna meet the next four months, we're gonna be on a, on the second week after the meeting.
That might be a, a good way to do it.
And have a topic.
I, I, I will note that I, I, I feel like our standalone work sessions have been highly productive.
Yeah.
Um, the last time we worked on the sign ordinance, it was like, okay, we start here and go to here, okay?
I'd, I'd be happy with that rather than the fifty minutes, you know, but yeah.
We just need to do it, yeah, I get your point.
And I would just note that that took a lot more than fifty minutes and it would have been pretty grueling to go from that into a regular meeting.
Okay, I get your point. All right, that's, that's awesome. Um, all right, and, and before we adjourn, the last thing I wanted to say is just for the record, I, uh, I regret Miss Ishi's not here tonight. Um, she's obviously incredibly uh dedicated, uh, professional and it's been great to have her legal acumen brought to bear on her work. Um, she's a class act all around. Um, I think we all agree, um, she's very, very good at, at paying attention to details and um, I, I truly hope that she'll remain involved um in some form in county government on particularly on in, uh, issues of land use and, and planning, because she's, she really works hard and um is very good at gathering information, presenting it in a cogent way. So she will be missed and in the same breath, I wanna um say I look forward to working with Mr. Sisk and um, and I, I know we'll welcome him next month. So, um, again, thank you to Miss Ishi for her great dedication over the last few years, so, thank you. With that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Thank you, second.
Second.
No discussion, all those in favor adjourn.
All right.
Aye, thanks. Thanks, everyone.